I'd like to call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Do notice having been posted, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. Roll call of members present. Ms. Corville?
Present.
Mrs. Ashley?
Present.
Ms. Ferrer?
Present.
Mr. Machado, I think he'll be joining us later. Robert Goh, present with us tonight is our superintendent of schools Jeffrey Schoonover, director of business and finance Ronald Taro, and our reporting secretary Robert Decker.
I will call to order this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee at 5:31. Do notice having been posted, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. I'll do a roll call of members present. Mr. Fenstemaker?
Here.
Ms. Ferrera?
Here.
Ms. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Machado?
Here.
And the chair is present. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee will be held on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, in the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School So that was a call to order of the region, the joint?
Or either way.
Either way. Do we have to do it again, or we're good?
No.
We're good. Okay.
I got it.
I got it. Thank you. Appreciate that. I knew you would. You want to do the pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to go first, or do you want me to go first?
Call the joint.
Executive session.
All right. All right. Call to order, join executive session at 5:33 PM pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees asks me custodians and power professionals and cafeteria units and Somerset Teachers Association, STA. The committee will return to open session. So moved.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to call to order a joint executive session at 5:34 PM pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees asks me custodian, power professional, and cafeteria units and the Somerset Teachers Association, STA.
Sold.
Motion by Ms. Ferrera, second to Ms. O'Brien. All those in favor?
Aye.
We don't need to do a roll call. The committee will return to open session. Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee will return to open session. And the first item on our agenda under student teaching and learning is the report of our student representative, Ryan Viera.
Hello, everyone. Report's pretty short today, but it's okay. So to start off, fine performing arts had, I unfortunately couldn't make it, but I heard it was a phenomenal performance over the weekend. I was upset I couldn't make it, but that's okay. Winter sports have also begun. Boys basketball won their last game against Derby. I don't know what the status is right now, but they have a game right now, and then they're against the Pontiac, which will start at 5:15. Girls basketball lost their last game, and they have another game, which is starting tonight at 6:30. Boys hockey won their first game versus Pontiac, but tied with Diamond on Saturday, or which was their Prentice Cup, but they tied. Track and field has been preparing for their upcoming meet, because I'm not sure the date of that, but they've been working hard to prepare for that. And wrestling had one win versus Whitman Hansen in their first meet, and their next meet tomorrow is at 7 o'clock. And then one thing that we talked about at our meeting today with Mr. Schoonover that a lot of the students are excited for, I know it's a little ways away, but Dr. Bressford mentioned it, I believe at the last meeting or two meetings ago, on April 8th, we'll be having a career day here at the high school. So a form was sent out to students asking what careers that they have some interest in and would be willing to, or want to see someone from that profession come in to talk to have a chance to ask them questions and listen to what they have to say about that career. So that will look like, that will be on a half-day in April, which there'll be two 50-minute blocks where you can go to one profession, listen to somebody speak, then I go to another block for 50 minutes and listen to that speaker for 50 minutes. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any feedback on the Thanksgiving Day game and students?
So I have, I heard people definitely had fun. I definitely see that there are some people who missed the rivalry that existed previously, but I think the way that it was organized this year was still equally enjoyable for students. So that was a response I saw.
How about the rally? What was the response with that? It seemed that there was a little jabs every once in a while.
Yeah, there was a little jab, but it was fun. It was fun.
That's part of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Three more days till then.
Three more days.
I'm not counting.
Three more days.
Great. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the recognition of our November visionaries. They are Ava Andrade, independent; Hannah Carpenter, resilient; Lorelei Hawes, respectful; Peyton Morosco, academic; Aragoulette, independent; Connor Simoes, digital citizen; Alana Souza, empathetic; and Ella Souza, digital citizen. Congratulations to those students for their efforts. The next item on the agenda is under business and financial, the October and November financial statements. Mr. Taro?
I think, just to save the school committees some time, I'll just jump to the November and kind of highlight the November, and if you have any questions afterwards with the October, if you're free to reach out. For the most part, we're trending favorably in all those areas. The business and finance line and the principal admin lines, there were, there's a placeholder in the school committee contract line, they have to do a budget transfer, that hasn't been completed yet, and we need to do that after December financials are closed out. I'll be presenting that sometime in January for your approval. One of the things you want to look at is function code 1450, which is admin technology. It looks, it shows an overage. However, the money's also available in function code 20250, which you need to find 20250 on page...
Two?
On page two or three. Is it two?
It's two.
It's two, correct. So there's money available in that. For the most part, everything is trending pretty good. There is a savings right now in the power professional line, which is the 2330 function code, and that's because of some positions that haven't been filled yet, and we're making so we have some savings in that particular account. I know that Dr. Bressford is working diligently and trying to get some positions filled, and that's one of the reasons why there's a savings in that particular account. That's probably the biggest one out of everything. The out-of-district tuition, I'm going to just jump to out-of-district transportation, which is the special education transportation piece, and that's also trending favorably by about $300,000. We have an offset credit that covers the regular regional transportation, which is the, this is the...
Regional.
It's the regional transportation bonus.
Yep.
So we're receiving more than we anticipated before the budget was passed, and though we realize $100, I think actually the budget reflected an adjustment at the end before the budget was approved. So that particular line is in good shape. We did purchase the two minivans, purchased two Chrysler Pacificus. We had two vans on order, which are the transit vans. Those particular vans have been canceled. They can't fulfill it, so we've got to communication. So what we did is we issued a new purchase order, placed a new order in to try to get back on the list. So we're waiting to hear from that. That was a year and a half, it's been almost two years.
So you're looking to do that in addition to the Pacificus, or do the Pacificus just?
I am, yes. Well, there's one, I mean desperate need of a wheelchair vehicle, and that would be done in a four-transit. It's a better equipped vehicle, because once you put a wheelchair in, you have other seats that you can use for the vehicle, so that's something that we're looking to do. And then we have, one of them is getting up there in mileage, so it's more to replace that than it is to add to the fleet. And then the other one that I wanted you to be aware of was really the out-of-district tuition piece, which is on the bottom of the page. And I'm going to just jump, just above the out-of-district tuition is the debt service. Remember Mr. Pearson mentioned this, and I actually implemented it this year, is I incurred the money for the debt service payments. So when you look at the bottom line, you'll see the zero, we have not paid the debt service payments, when the debt service payments paid, that I relieve the incumbents, and that'll be zero all the time. It doesn't show that we have money available to spend for other areas. So you'll see that on the line just above, which is the debt service for principals and debt service realtors. The out-of-district tuition one is the bottom section, it's the last item on the page. We able to draw down some additional IDA funds. I'm going to be using those up, I think it's somewhere close to $100,000 that'll relieve the operating budget. So we're using that, those monies first before we use our operating money for freezer money, and there's some other things we can do and work out.
So when we look at that, Mr. Taro?
Yes.
Does that, what, we already still have what's supposed to be a large balance of the $1.1 million, that's offset by the credit, the state and federal credit just below it?
Yes, that's offset, correct. So I think, oh yeah, it was 2.3 million dollars for total out-of-district costs, with $1.2 million being the credit. The credit is from nine IDA funds, the special education funds, and also the circuit rate of funds. And there's some expenditures, obviously, on this that haven't been dispersed yet, they have been throughout the year. There's balances in the educational line, there's balances in the acquisition of education equipment, so, and some things for athletics, it's like over $300,000 in athletics that hasn't been expended yet, that'll happen over the course of the year as the sports take place.
But overall, relative to the budget pass, actually, we're trending forward?
We're trending favorably, and I don't anticipate any surprises or concerns. We'll do what we did each year, is we went through the budget process, looked at contact boards, what do you need now, place the what is now, for various departments, everyone gave everybody an opportunity, tell us what you need. We don't want you to not ask for it and not get it. If we can do it, we're going to do it.
This one?
Just a question. Do you talk a lot flashier about maintenance funds that you can cut away as we have, things like the...
Yeah.
And I don't know if, thought about that and how we can plan that.
I actually have, we, Mr. Mike Carrera is looking at a vendor to come in and give me a proposal on a baseball field, and he's tired of, kind of talking about it, and I think they're probably tired of hearing about it. And so we're going to get a company who actually truly does fields and gives a better recommendation is probably what we can do for that. We're also going to look at some of the equipment we have for grass cutting, even though we're going to be doing the fields, some of this equipment probably, we need probably something a little bit more robust, a little bit wider blaze, or something like that, so we want to do that. There's a pickup truck that we probably need to replace, and it's probably close to 10 years old, so we're looking to probably try to get that replaced, we've got an order and all that. So there's capital things, which are the one-time expenditures we're going to look at, and try to get those particular things now. We did last year with the renovation of the field. We did more work this year, it's been treated, it's found there was the weeds, and cleaning it up. So to answer your question, yes, and it was, if you recall, there was $200,000 budget that approved to transfer over to stabilization funds, to do such things like that and stuff. We have the money and the bond proceeds that haven't been used yet, we want to use that for the fields, plus I mean the operating budget.
And the turf fund, football field?
Turf fund, the football field is going to be a bigger issue, especially when we have to probably look at the track as well.
Well, that's what I was just thinking, was if we have some funds available that we can kind of tuck away for that.
Yeah, so we're restricted on what we can do in the stabilization fund, I think we're pushing up to the ceiling, and we can put in some stabilization fund. I have not had a chance to talk to the auditors, probably, who would be the best avenue for setting up that mechanism to start planning for the field and the track.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a, this conversation just made me think, maybe I'm curious going forward, maybe even in the spring, I'd be curious to know if the reduction in user fees for athletics and show choir, I'm just curious if that has had any impact on participation? That's just for, a question for later, but this conversation made me think a little bit about that. I'm just curious to see if we've seen an increase in athletic participation, and also things are holding up budget-wise with that reduction. So I don't know if we could just get an update sometime in the future on that. Anyone have anything else on that item? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taro.
My pleasure.
Still time to rescind your retirement.
No, we have an excessive official.
That's it. That's his full job.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda under new business is the consideration and vote to allow admittance of Brockton Public School District and the Whitman Hansen Regional Public School District to the Reed's Collaborative.
Okay, you have a document in your folder. Both the superintendents from those two districts approach Reed's Collaborative, and Reed's, both Somerset and Somerset Berkeley, and Berkeley are members of the Reed's Collaborative, and they extend, pretty much, we're probably the one, I think we're the district farthest this way, I'm trying to think if Seacock is a member, and it goes up to communities east and maybe even slightly north of Brockton, Abington, for instance, down to Carter. So it's like this southeast of Massachusetts into Quamish County. And Whitman Hansen, I believe they're a member of one other collaborative right now, they've sought membership from Reed's, they do have a number of students who are attending Reed's programs. And Brockton is not a member of any collaborative, so Reed's would be the first, is, they're one of the only school districts in the state, and that does not belong to a collaborative. So they both request to be members. The Reed's Board voted unanimously to accept both, but then that requires a majority vote of member district school committees. The Somerset School Committee, excuse me, voted last week in favor of this, and I'm not sure if Berkeley's had the vote yet or not.
I think it was at our last meeting, I wasn't, that wasn't...
Okay. And the, there's always an advantage to expanding membership, because it does open up opportunities perhaps for one of those new districts to host a program. Brockton, for instance, has a lot of in-house programs, that they could potentially host some programs for the Reed's Collaborative, or member districts to be part of, to attend the program fair.
Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Does anyone have any questions? All right. With that, then, I would entertain a motion to approve the admittance of the Brockton Public School District and the Whitman Hansen Regional School District as the new Reed's Collaborative member districts effective July 1st, 2024. Sold.
Certainly.
Motion made by Ms. Ferrera and seconded by Mr. Fenstemaker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda is appointments. So we do have a few new positions, a school nurse, a few power professionals, and we have a long-term sub in physical education. And to, I think there was a comment that Mr. Machado made earlier about power professionals, maybe I probably should reference that here, but we continue to look at some vacant positions and trying, we do have some vacancies within power professionals, that unit, for instance, and we're just filling positions that aren't here, it'll be on the January agenda, I expect, where we're looking at taking two power professionals and an RBT that we haven't been able to fill, but hiring a behavior specialist for the remainder of the year, someone with BCBA credentials in lieu of those other positions, just because, so that we can get someone with the skillset in to help our students. So those are the types of things that we've done on both Somerset side and I'll go out Somerset Berkeley. I want to kind of piggyback on something that Ryan mentioned with that career fair on April 8th. One of my, and I tell them this, one of my favorite meetings of every month is when I meet with our student advisory committee from the high school. Dr. Bressford and I just have a wonderful conversation with them, and they let us know anything that, you know, they would, they think the school needs to improve, the student experience. And today, we did, as he mentioned, we talked a little bit about the career fair, and I just went around asking each one of them what they would like, and it was everything from aviation science to law enforcement, particularly federal government, FBI, to business entrepreneurialism, engineering, medicine, so like, just this group of, I don't know, eight or nine kids, they had throughout a bunch of these professions, and Dr. Bressford already had many of them, you know, someone lined up. And the way it's going to work, there are going to be two sessions, it's going to be on an early release day in April, the same day, I believe, where we have our, must be the town election. So kids will only, we have to dismiss early that day at the high school, so it's a perfect opportunity to do something like this. So kids will pick two sessions that they want to go to. So we'll have all of the opportunities out there, and then they pick two that are up in charge today. So we're still trying to, I know Dr. Bressford's busy trying to get more, she has a bunch, and I believe she still is looking for more. Actually, a PA is one that was mentioned today, and I said, we know someone who can get a PA or two, or, you know, something in the medical field. So anyway, if anyone, if you know of someone who might be interested, please let us know. Yesterday's weather, it's not, it's a, it was a, it's a rare thing that we let students out, even just a little bit, usually with snowfalls. Yesterday, I was, as Mr. Taro knows, I was really on the fence with this, and spoke with Chief Costa and Ryan Fisher, just to decide what to do. And we did have a few streets that were closed down, blocked off in town. One was right here in Commie, on Commie, in front of the gas station, some police station, Clifford Holland, the Grand View, was shut down, but that wasn't, that wouldn't have been a major impact, but there were a few others. And my concern was if we had a normal dismissal at the high school and the middle school, buses would be showing up at the elementary schools 15 minutes late, 20 minutes late, and I was trying to avoid that from happening. So we ended up, I consulted with Dr. Bressford and Dr. Kamara, both of whom were in favor of, they were getting phone calls, saying, is the high school getting out early, is the middle school getting out early? So anyway, we just lengthened each commute by 10 minutes, letting the high school out at 1:45 instead of 2:05, 20 minutes early, and then the middle school by 10 minutes, 2:30 instead of 2:40, just to give that a little bit of extra travel time. So I know anytime those decisions are made, there are people who are upset by it, and the timing of it, it was close to the end of the day, but our elementary kids were not affected by it, and that's always my concern. I don't like to let elementary students out early unless we absolutely have to. But anyway, so just to give you some rationale or thinking that went behind that, again, it's not, it's always like that Monday morning quarterback, and you should have, should I have done it, should I have not done it, but I stand by my decision. Let's see. There's been, you may have read some of this, there's, the commissioner and Desi have been really, been pushing the messaging about chronic absenteeism. The state had last year, like 22% of students were chronically absent. Chronic absenteeism is defined as missing 10% or more of the school year, so 18 days or more. It was 22% for the state, and prior to the pandemic, the state was around 13%. At Somerset Berkeley last year, we're at 19.7%, so better than the state, but not bad. The year before, Somerset Berkeley was 27.5% chronic absenteeism. So this is, the pandemic just threw everything off. Prior to the pandemic, the high school, for the two consecutive years before, the 17, 18, 18, 19 school years, were floating around 11 to 12%. So that's really where we're at. We're improving from last year, but 19.7 is still eight points or so higher than where we had been just a few years ago. So anyway, there's some, there's a lot of messaging, I just wanted to give you that information, in case you start to hear some of that, you're wondering what our rates are and how we compare, but there's still, still that push, and the, and Desi is considering, I know there was a presentation to the Board of Education earlier this month, they're looking to possibly change the accountability weight for chronic absenteeism. Right now, it's like 5 or 10% of the total weight. They're looking to make it 20% or so, because they consider it to be that important, which it is, we need kids in classrooms if we want them to learn. So there are some things happening, so I just want to call that to your attention. And then my last item, shared with you, just, I think it was on Friday afternoon, status on students living at the Orbits Hotel. Now, and we've been referring to them, it's always been as the migrant students are newcomers, but there are, the majority of the students there are migrants, families, but there are also some homeless families who are there. They're all being relocated to a hotel in Reagan, with a few exceptions who are families who are deciding to go on their own, go somewhere else, living with family or something like that. But of the, there are 30 school age kids living at the hotel, this is pre-K through Some of them were already not attending school, they, if, they're living there, but they came from another school district, talking to Brockton. And through McKinney-Vento, they have the right to attend the previous school or this one, so they were attending, they chose to attend the school they came from, and have been... So they were attending, they chose to attend the school they came from and have been transported every day. So not all of the students came here. But of all the students who are, were the choice of going to Bridgewater Radham or staying in Somerset, Somerset Berkeley, they chose Somerset, Somerset Berkeley. We don't have a single student, as of right now, going to the Bridgewater Radham district, even though they'll be living right. So that is, and I know this is a Somerset Berkeley meeting, but it's, we have one student who will be attending Chase, one at North, six at South, six at the middle school, and three will be living here at the high school. And I sent the staff a message on Friday afternoon just saying, just giving them an overview of this and really just commending them because from what I understand, when, when they've, when families found out that they were being relocated, but through McKinny Vento, they had the option. I heard it was a quick choice. They wanted to stay here. They said they, they were, their kids were welcomed. They felt welcomed. Their kids were thriving. So, you know, very thankful, very, you know, proud to be the superintendent of our school districts for the environment that not only do our staff and administrators provide, but our students do. So I think that says a lot that they want to stay here. So I think, yeah, these are all my topics.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Spooner. Okay, the next item on the agenda under policy updates are policies for second readings. You have an extensive list. I would, does anyone want to pull anything out of that list? So in that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the second reading of the policies noted on this agenda, which will become a part of the permanent minutes.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ferrera and seconded by Mr. Fenstemaker. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. And then the next item on the agenda, policies for first readings. Would anyone like an even more extensive list? Way to go, Policy Committee. Working hard. We appreciate your hard work. Would anyone like to take any of those out of order? Okay, in that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the policies noted on this agenda, which will become a part of the permanent minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ferrera, seconded by Mr. Fenstemaker. Any discussion?
I just have to say the same thing. Whenever I clicked on all of them and hit open and I saw thirty-six of them open up, I was like, no wonder it took forever to download these. It's crazy.
There's a lot. I don't know. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted.
If I can just add, I think it was maybe the next day after those were approved. Robin, we received the next MASC update and I think already, one of those may have already been suggested for revision.
Yeah, yeah. I feel like we still have a million left.
We've done quarterly, not slow, you know.
The MASC could also slow down. Slow your roll. All right, the next item on the agenda is the life-threatening allergy policy, JLC dash one. This is the biannual review of the policy and procedures. I would entertain a motion to approve the life-threatening allergy policy, JLC one, as presented. Motion by Ms. Ferrera, seconded by Ms. O'Brien. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. And to policy, prevent. The next item on the agenda under other matters informational, Somerset and Berkeley Public Schools updates. Somerset.
Most of the items that we met last week, basically we spoke on it today as well. We did have our student representative. She did mention that they're doing some, well, they will be more follow-up on the school, middle school lunches. We did acknowledge the Raiders of the Month. We, as well as Mr. Superintendent, as the superintendent mentioned, we allowed the two additions to Reads. The superintendent gave us a similar report about the migrants and the homeless and also some appointments. We also had a report on the new middle school, looking great by the way. We had a tour. It's, it's, it's nice to see there that all the students will in fact be there in September. We also approved the forty-five plus policies, as we just did. And on a side note, it was just great to have, you know, Ryan mentioned about the show choir, but it was great to see it wasn't just our seniors, I mean, our high school students, but we also had participants from all levels, including Kyle Como. We love you, Mr. Kyle. Coming from Berkeley as well. It was just a real, it was nice to see all three districts performing for the residents. So that's the report.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. No. Ian for Berkeley, Miss Solomon.
As I stated, I had, I did not, had our December meeting, was not able to attend. I had a feeling, was not able to attend. So I really can't speak up. There's nothing that came, you know, to me that wasn't brought back to me.
Do you want to talk about your celebrations?
We did have our lights on celebration in the pouring rain, but it was actually quite successful. There were, there were, I don't know, it felt like millions of people to us because we put so much into it. But even in the rain, it was very well attended. It was great, it was good.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, topics not anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. I have nothing. Action items for future meetings. Anything that we haven't mentioned yet?
Just your item about the user fees.
And that doesn't, that need not be January, right?
Yeah.
I think we'll get an update on the, on the committee that decides on the business members' job description.
Yes.
The job description for, is.
Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the following minutes as presented. Does anyone want to pull any of these out? Okay, in that case, it would be for the open session minutes of November fourteenth, 2023, the open session minutes of November thirtieth, 2023, the executive session minutes of November thirtieth, 2023, the joint open session minutes of November thirtieth, 2023, and the joint executive session minutes of November thirtieth, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ferrera and seconded by Ms. O'Brien. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Next on the agenda, we have public input.
Just one more thing. Winter Fest was held here at the high school. It went quite well. We had, they had over fourteen hundred people plus. And what I have to, what I really enjoyed the most, it wasn't really, it was really focused on kids. It was all about the kids. There weren't food trucks. There weren't vendors. Everyone that came in had a kid with them. It was just great to see. So well done to the committee. Also, our custodians were here. They helped set up, break down. But it was a, in my opinion, it was a success. I don't know. We'll wait to hear Mr. Marks and Paul Coogly say. But it was a real good event. So kudos to the school. I definitely think it was probably the right move, especially with the threat of the rain. But we did have, hopefully, it wasn't a wreck for the, but hopefully nothing got damaged or anything like that, but it was a good time. So.
Excellent. Okay, the next item on the agenda would be, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A two, to discuss strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel treasurer, and the committee will not return to open session.
So moved. I don't know.
Oh, motion by Ms. Ferrera, seconded by Ms. O'Brien. Unroll call vote. Ms. Solomon? Ms. Ferrera?
Aye.
Mr. Fenstemaker? Ms. Ramos Gagliardi?
Aye.
Ms. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Machado?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So before we proceed, I want to correct the error. When we voted to enter into executive session, we did it by a voice vote and we should have done that by a roll call vote. So for, to set the record straight, I'd like to redo that vote. So motion to enter into executive session was moved by.
Per all those.
Per.
Yep. So basically, I don't know who made the motion and seconded it, but I vote aye to enter into executive session.
Mr. Machado, Ms. O'Brien?
I vote aye.
Ms. Gagliardi? You were not present.
Yeah, I was not present, so that's fine.
Mr. Fenstemaker? The chair votes aye, Ms. Ferrera?
Aye.
And Ms. Solomon is not yet here.
So I will do the same. Roll call vote. Mrs. Ferrera?
Aye.
Ms. Corville?
Aye.
Mrs. Ashley?
Aye.
Ms. Machado?
Aye.
Chair, Robert, aye.
Thank you. Apologize for the error. Okay, we are back to open session in the first, oh, you need to adjourn first. For, no, because we, sorry, not yet. That next item applies to both.
No, we're going to have this conversation.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I was thinking of treasurer. So the next item on the agenda under new business is the continued discussion on the plan for the Director of Business and Finance position, job description, posting, and search. Mr. Spooner or Mr. Taro want to start us off?
I wonder what you share or what you.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if we shared with the school committee, but I did kind of go back and did a talk chat to figure out what the structure would look like. You know, I know there was discussion last time about title of the position and how that would pan out. So my opinion is, is if you're looking for a finance person, you wish you had a finance person. I think you'll be able to capture, if you want to draw from private industry, the titles would be more important to draw. If you have an assistant superintendent title, I think it's going to draw a different person. If you have a chief financial officer or some, something similar that's in the private industry, you're able to draw somebody from private industry. You're not going to be needing salary, that's the only problem with those particular types, which you have to keep that in mind. But you can draw somebody who may be a low-level CFO at a company. Draw that person, get some training, make that person accurate and still have that title. Just my thoughts.
So chairs, if you don't mind, if I could just ask a quick question. So one of the things that when we were talking about was like, you know, we were thinking about hiring someone and then letting that person get their feet wet to decide how they want to build the structure. My concern is if we bring someone in, obviously, we've all believed there are a lot of items on your plate and we're trying to figure out, is this job, the job of a one person or is it one person and a bigger team? So what I was trying to find out from the person that's currently doing, if you were coming, if you were looking at your job description, knowing that you were doing like you are now, I'm afraid that many people might not be applying for it because why would I be running two districts when I can run one district somewhere else? And we all know that there is a major shortage of business and finance people in the state of Massachusetts. So what I'm trying to figure out is how can we be more attractive to certain people other than money, obviously, and titles? If you were in my seat right now and you were building and we were trying to fill your role, how would you structure this? Because if anyone knows the districts, it's you and the superintendent. So that's what I was trying to get out of you from today.
So that, the talk chat actually kind of spells that out. So what I did is I took the structure of the staff accountant and I did it times two with the responsibilities. In my prior positions, I had individuals under me anyways. So and, and those staff, even though they are ultimately my responsibility, those, those tasks get completed, it's under the direction of control of the finance director, whatever the budget was. So I kind of separated the responsibilities to make sure that there was a balance between both staff and the job you get done. To make sure that you hire people that are skilled in the area that can do those particular tasks. And that's really why I structured the faculty. The, the, a good example is the end of the year report for Desi. The past three years and even prior to me, Lindsay did both districts, did both reports. Twenty-five, thirty hours report. So I'm putting maybe forty to sixty hours just to do the state reports, plus everything else. And training the person that we just hired for the staff accountant, replacing Mrs. Johnson. And she actually, I let her do one of the state reports this year, oversaw, spent, spent time with her, let her learn because somebody else needs to know that besides the person coming in to do the job. My, my experience has always been train people to do the jobs, give them the support they need and let them, let them develop in the position. That's how I structured the organizational chart. That's how I envisioned it today. And to be quite frank with you, if we had that structure when I was, you know, I first hired it, the job wouldn't be as overwhelming as it's been. And, and it's important because I pride myself on getting the jobs done, getting them right and being accurate so that the school committee and superintendent never has to worry about what I've done. So I think the structure that I gave you with that extra staff, maybe it's not a full-time, but maybe it's a part-time, it's another half-time staff accountant. I'm also concerned about the structure of payroll. You have one payroll person handles payrolls above. So when I look at those staff accounts, I think those, I see those individuals as being support for me, but also support for payroll. Verifying times, you can do some calculations that all payroll has to do is just process. Whether we build models to do file uploads into the payroll system instead of doing manual entries, those are the things I could never get to. So that's, you know, I looked at all avenues implications on the accounts payable, how many AP runs, how many we should be doing every other week. James and I have been having that conversation. So those, I think the level of staff, when you're running a forty-three million dollar operation, a forty-four million dollar operation, combined both districts, it's a big operation. So you need the staff to support.
So if I'm reading this correctly, you're asking, you believe we should hire, obviously, someone in your role, but we should also consider a one, an additional finance person for the team. So whoever is responsible will have five direct reports or are handling five of these tasks behind.
And supporting each other.
And obviously cross-supporting each other.
Supporting each other in cross utilization, cross training. They have more than one person that should be able to do a cross payroll. One person should be able to, more than one person in payroll. And that's really the way I have my district, my prior district, you have three people being paid. One's out, the other person can be outstanding. If Mickey's sick, she's still pushing herself to get in. Whereas a team, we're trying to support. So you're really going to build that structure. And then that'll make a difference with the person who's replacing.
I guess the, I'll ask a question. Is that something that we could bring in, if it was going to be a staff accountant? When would we be able to bring that in as far as you having the ability to train them? And there's a lot of training involved and we want them to broaden on now, and she's doing a great job, I understand. But if we were bringing on another one for your setup here, when would be the best time to do that?
Last week?
Well, I mean, when we, when we hired the staff accountant, I hired, it was an overlap for, for Mrs. Johnson to be here to help train and also for me to spend some time with her. We had two months with the training and the overlap. Mrs. Johnson's arguing, you know, end of this month, she's done. So training-wise, building the two budgets, doing the contract negotiation piece. So, training-wise, building the two budgets, doing the contract negotiation piece, I would probably take one of those individuals under my wing to help do some of the fiscal impact calculations, and I can validate it, so I have a second set of eyes. I'm like, the person is doing it, trying to validate it, and try to make sure the calculations are correct. You know, so it's complicated to do that and make sure it's right. So, from a timing standpoint, there's no perfect time. But if there was, if it was to be, I would probably want to have it done before the end of the fiscal year. You know, April, March, April, May.
Have somebody...
Probably March or April would be the ideal time. So that they would help out with the end of year closeout books, get acclimated to whatever the year looks like, so the following year will be ready for whoever's here filling the position, and then get some training. Because by then, the majority of the late work for the budgets will be completed. You know, we'll have, by then, we'll at least have completed at least, oh, we'll complete both public areas. So then, when that kind of settles down, and we can focus on some other things, it's like getting training, because Smadaris was a payable person. Or if Smadaris was leaving in June, I can also get some training with payroll and get those, get that gone. So, it's a lot of training, and you know that I'm committed to whatever I have to do after June thirty to make sure everything is working. I can put a lot of things in place. I really hate to see it fall backwards or fall behind, so those are my thoughts.
So you think in April, May, and December, would not be enough benefit to bring someone over here and then that?
Well, it's possible if we get the right candidate. If you get the right candidate, yeah, it would be nice. But I also am going to be posting for the payable position. So I want to have a payable position filled with some training with Smadaris and even probably the staff accountant myself, so that there's a transition that I'm not just doing the training, I walk away, and Smadaris walks away, and don't work as person's doing. I want to have the staff accountant be training the payroll area besides myself and helping implement some of the, what I would say efficiencies that we can probably find within the payroll system and the process. It would be nice too, but it would be weight, it'd be a lot to get the training for traditional staff accountant and a payable person at the same time.
So much, might be the earliest?
I would say would probably be the earliest, the earliest. Because we're going to go through the integral process.
So just to clarify, you're talking about adding one FTE full-time? Is that the requirement?
That's what my thought is. It goes back to the structure of what you need to help support the person to come in to replace you. If you don't have a structure in place, and they come in and they're overwhelmed with all this stuff, I'm not sure with the, with the long-term, or the longevity would be for that person without at least a structure in motion. And with me supporting at least for a couple of days a week during the transition, then it could help guide whatever that can.
Is the notion to, while we hold off on that additional staff accountant potentially for the end of the first quarter of 2024? The notion is now that we have, because I think part of the question in our last meeting was, what's the right title? How do we go about presenting this position, let's call it an opportunity, and get the best qualified candidate? That we could still and should do sooner rather than later, given the magnitude? Is that what you would think, magnitude? For the, for the current... Launch position? Yeah. I think so. I think that we need to, my own feeling is that we need to... Job titles, job, it's not really a new position, it would be somewhat, it would be new. We would have to approve the job description with the title if I apologize, because we would have to approve that with the assistant superintendent. I agree that you, given the current climate, you are unlikely to get a lot of qualified candidates if you don't at least provide folks with that title. And we also have to be prepared to increase the salary. So I, so I thought I heard differently. I thought this title that you have here is what is being proposed.
Chief Financial Officer.
Not Assistant Administrator, Assistant Superintendent, but more Chief Financial Officer, is what I heard, right? Because that, you're going to, then you're focusing on individuals with that specific level of expertise, right?
Ms. Gagliardi, like the, Mr. McDonald did reach out to me when he heard the whole conversation, and he suggested going in the same direction that Ron just suggested, because then we're going to get someone with more of a financial background and it's such a big role to fill, and that's big stickler right now. Because I can't picture Mr. Spoonover having to step in and do some stuff like this.
I'm not certified...
Right.
...to do, licensed to do the things that Mr. McDonald does.
And I do think, and I know it's still, you made a good point at the last meeting, where if the description of the job was so, I'm trying to think of the word you used. What word did you use when you defined what the job was?
I don't know what word you used, but the rest I think summarizes.
Yeah, it was a, so, how do people feel about the job description now?
Can I circle back to the title? I'm sorry, I missed that. I totally misunderstood that. Yeah, that's what I... And I'm, I understand what you're, are there other public districts that, that title it that way?
Chief Financial Officer?
That's unusual to me, but my experience is limited.
I've seen Chief Technology Officer in that realm, so it's not that outlandish from my perspective. But, you know, I, there are lots of business administrator jobs on School Spring right now, and they're all called some variation. And I know, I think at our last meeting, you were talking about, you know, calling it Assistant Superintendent slash something else. So I don't know if you would be willing to, you know, think about doing something like that and have Chief Financial Officer as that second or first part of it, depending on what we want people to see first.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry, I missed the first part of that.
So, we threw around at the last meeting, having two job titles with a slash in between, so it would appeal to either party. So somebody with an education background that came up in the ranks, got their certification, you know, there might be somebody with that background who's extremely qualified and would love to come here, but, you know, we have to assume that it's going to be harder than that to find a candidate, so.
This is what, I want to ask one quick question about an assistant superintendent. And I, we have, and I have to go back now. The last time we even entertained this was with Mr. Kylie, probably ten years ago or eleven years ago. Having an assistant superintendent, isn't the reporting structure different as well?
Reporting?
Yeah, isn't there like, like a business manager? Like, we hire obviously superintendent, but an assistant superintendent, isn't that a position that you hire and not the school committee?
No, I'm actually looking at that now. So, the Ed Reform Act of ninety-three did change it. So it says, "The school committee has powers of advice and consent over a number of limited, over a limited number of additional personnel" besides the superintendent, "subject to the recommendation of the superintendent, and may include assistant superintendents, specialized directors, school business officers, illegal captains." So there is, the responsibility, the supervision of the person is the superintendent, but the school committee is involved in the hiring of an assistant superintendent.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the assistant superintendent, we didn't, I just want to make sure that we are effect hiring him or her versus your, it now becomes your responsibility to appoint this person. Okay. I'm, that's the only thing I was trying to figure out. It's been a long time.
I looked at our policy under professional personnel, and it looks as though the language says that, somebody picked correctly from wrong. There's a recommendation that a school, that a screening committee, a representative screening committee be formed. And the committees can either vote to establish that themselves, or they can defer to the superintendent to establish the committee, and that they're involved in the screening process. But it sounds like from our policies, essentially, we... You establish a representative screening committee. The administrator has the final say in determining who will be hired, but it is expected that the screening committee's input will be a factor in the decision. That's what our policy GCF says.
For which role?
Well, it says district administrators.
Yeah, because I would never...
It doesn't specifically say assistant superintendent.
Yeah, I was going to say, because I would never allow the superintendent to approve, I mean, to make a final say on a position that falls under our jurisdiction. That's why I'm like, mm.
Well, it's a little wishy-washy as to whether it does fall under our jurisdiction, because there are plenty of districts that the superintendent appoints assistant superintendents. And the committee does a blessing, but it's pro forma type of thing in most cases. It's like, here's the person I appointed. So, I do, I do think it would be important for us at this point, though, to clarify what our process is, if it would be helpful, because I think time is of the essence. And so, I think it's important for us to determine, how do we want to form, you know, does a joint screening committee, are we forming it? Are we going to have the superintendent form it?
I am glad you said, you suggested that I not make. I would recommend the superintendent form it. The only reason why is two reasons. One, the superintendent should be working, and obviously, he's going to appoint a couple of, he's going to ask a couple of school committee members to join, he's going to ask some principals, most likely some teachers, maybe parent at large and things like that. But I think he has, he has the contacts. So if there's principals, instead of us trying to organize it, I would say let him, unless he doesn't want to. Here I am, just throwing something on his page, but I would recommend...
That is my responsibility.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
And that's what's happened before.
Right.
Way back when, when we were, people were, but certainly the last screening committee that I remember being on, I think, was for Special Ed Director. And it happened that you put together the committee. So I think, I think that makes sense to follow. So then, so the next step, so we're going to finalize a job description, including a title, based on what we all have in mind, which we would actually have to, I think we would have to vote on it, because it involves, if it's going to be a title change, I do think we're supposed to vote on it. If I'm reading our own policy correctly. So, and we couldn't, we couldn't even do that at separate meetings, you know? I don't know that we need to...
You know what I would recommend, and this is again, just a recommendation, that the chairs appoint two members from each committee to work with the superintendent to work on the job description, bring it like we do with policies, instead of us trying... One, I do not agree, is having one committee working on it and another committee working on it, because we could be total different pages or books. So I would, I would just say, anyone who's interested, reach out to the chair, see if the chair will do so, and then work with the superintendent and the business manager, finalize it, and hopefully have a joint meeting within the next month, and post it.
There is, there is an urgency. There is an urgency. So I just want to make sure we're all okay with that process and clear out that process so we can, I'll try to move along. Yeah, I would just note that, like, I think, I just want to go back to our last meeting where there was some question, I was concerned about making this position as attractive and doable, for the long term as possible. So, thank you for the short time that it's been from the last meeting to this meeting for giving some thought to what could be a sustainable department for this large district, this large district. And I would just urge the committee, whether I'm on that subcommittee or not, to give some thought to the recommendation of the superintendent and the business manager in how we titled this, because I think that's what we were looking for, so.
I only have one other concern that I wanted to raise, just about the process, and I would, as a recommendation to the superintendent and the screening committee, would be that I know oftentimes for, or sometimes for positions at this level, assistant superintendent, CFO, whatever you call it, sometimes districts elect to make that a very public process. And I would encourage us not to do that, for the reason that I think that you often have well-qualified candidates who are in districts, and when you, short of superintendent or sometimes principal, right? Those are often public for a very good reason. But in, in the nature of this role, I think that if you insist on public finalist interviews and that type of thing, you may, there are some people who aren't going to want to go through that process, frankly, because if they don't get it, they've got to, you know, live where they are. And so in that sense, I would just ask us to think about that, because I wouldn't want to do, I don't think it necessarily gets you a better outcome, and I wouldn't want to do anything to dissuade qualified people from applying, because they don't want to be, you know, a finalist in a very, in that type of very public process. So that's my only other two cents on the process.
Some of that is guided by, I think, for us general, and at least for the superintendent. But I agree with you a hundred percent, where we, I think, we have to just stay within that narrow space. We don't need to fill this position. Yep.
It relates to the title too, it's just the concept out there. When you look at School Spring Law and Court Director of Finance and Operations, you may want to do that. There's something similar to that as well. Because a lot of the criteria has really, has to have an accounting degree, has to do sort of things, just to make sure that you get some skill who can actually understand debt and credits, and into fund transfers and stuff like that. If you don't, you're a wilderness. So, I just wish you the best.
I'd like to just add a couple of things. And I know we talked about timeline at the beginning, and I apologize if I said this last time. But in my mind, I was thinking of having this finalized by March thirty-first, because I know in a lot of central office contracts, there's at least a three-month clause to give proper notice. So I'm just thinking of that and knowing that we want someone for July first. And then regarding the titles, I shared with you after a recent Superintendent's Association Executive Committee I was at, someone referenced a school district that had an assistant superintendent opening, and they had thirty-two qualified applicants. And someone made a comment that there were about, there were roughly thirty-two business position openings in the state of Massachusetts. So just to show this, this large need that exists in Massachusetts for qualified directors of business and finance, assistant superintendents or whatever. So the concept that Ms. Andrews brought up about labeling as an assistant superintendent is certainly, would be, I think advantageous for some people who are looking to possibly go the superintendent track at some point, or just having that title change. And the CFO concept, when Ms. Taro mentioned that, I have noticed that more. Like, school districts follow more of that business model, where it's a CFO, CTO, even a chief learning officer, rather than a director of teaching learning or assistant superintendent. So, that chief concept, bringing the business, the private business side into public education in terms of positions, that's still not all that common, but it's gaining some traction with some districts. Maybe not, I think you see it more outside of New England than you do around here.
Are you advocating for a CEO title?
I did not say CEO. No, I did not.
So, can I, I just would like to ask one more question. So, hearing Mr. Spoonover and hearing Mr. Taro, am I understanding that we're probably going to be looking for a support person, FTE, around March timeframe, and then filing and asking for a business, or this new position, CFO, assistant superintendent, or business director in January or February? Is that what, is that how I'm...
January.
January? Okay. I just want to...
Posting in January to hopefully conclude by the end of March.
Okay.
If all goes well.
If we make this subcommittee, do we have time to post it in January?
I'm sorry?
If we make this subcommittee that we were discussing, do we have time to still do that and post in January? I mean, what kind of...
I mean, what kind of, yeah?
Thirty days.
Well, you can just-
And it's a screening committee, so you can post on school spring tomorrow, like.
Right, as long as, if, if the, the members of that screening committee have the authority to, to make those changes, rather than seeking school committee approval in mid to January, that's, that would be the whole, so do, you know, do they have to bring back the job description and everything to the full committees? Or do they have the authority to make those changes? I guess that's, that's my question.
I would say allow them to make that posting, and then when we meet as a whole, if we have to tweak, we can always tweak postings. I see postings being tweaked all the time, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't hold it up for that.
If anybody wants to be on it, send an email, please.
Yep.
Are you good on the K three side?
No, I was just saying, I just know me, I did the two of, yep.
Anybody on the K three side, anything to add? No? I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting for the Somerset School Committee.
So, vote.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Mrs. Ferrera?
Aye.
Ms. Corville?
Aye.
Mrs. Ashley?
Aye.
Mr. Machado?
Aye.
Robert Goh?
Aye.
Have a great night. Good night.
Good night, folks.